Okay, good morning, everybody. Welcome to staff meeting Wednesday, May 29th. And it's just so let's take it away.
All right, we have two topics this morning. We have one hour, so we're gonna go 30 minutes each topic. Both of these are topics that we have talked about historically, so it shouldn't be new, but there's some questions on both. Both of them came up in budget discussions this year. Julie is here to talk about the siren system in Sedgwick County. And then Steve and Mario are here to talk about the juvenile complex, which many of you toured within the last week or so. So we'll do 30 minutes for Julie and 30 minutes for that topic.
Good morning, Julie.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Julie Stimson, Emergency Management Director. This is gonna look really familiar. We kinda gave a similar presentation in 2022 because we were restructuring how we were gonna manage the outdoor warning system. So it's gonna kinda be a reflection. Chairman Beatty was not here, of course, when we had that discussion. So we're gonna kinda go back in time, build the story of how we got where we are today. And then I have some slides to answer some of the questions you all had and then also give a status update on where we are. So why do we even have an outdoor warning system? The state of Kansas tells us we have to have a warning system, but it does not say how we do that. There is no mandate for us to have an outdoor warning system. However, our culture here in the Midwest pretty much drives the need to have an outdoor warning system. We're not alone. We'll get more into that of how this other counties in the state of Kansas. FEMA has a tiered approach to what public warning is. Social media from the pyramid, social media, text messaging, local media, reverse dial, like a reverse 911, or what we use civic ready here locally. Sirens, outdoor speakers, and then we have the emergency alert system and the wireless emergency alert system, which is what the cell phones go off and scare the daylights out of us. So you can see it's all a tiered approach. There is not a single method in this pyramid that is 100% effective 100% of the time. It's easy to think that technology is where we want it to be with our wireless emergency alerts, but we did participate in the FCC test a couple of years ago and we learned otherwise. So again, this is another reason why we have so much redundancy and so many layers to our emergency warning system. I will emphasize the outdoor warning system is to alert those who are outdoors, who may not be by their cell phones, their telephones, their radios, even their Noah weather radios. These are the folks that may be shopping out in a plaza or a mall area, outdoor sports, hiking, fishing on a pond, those type of things. So that is what the focus is of those outdoor warning systems is to let people know who are away from that technology. Hey, something's happening. So we gotta go back to 2012 and how we kinda got started into this hodgepodge of a mess of a system. You'll see the bright red drawn out box. We call that the polygon. And in 2012, the National Weather Service advanced technology where we could do more targeted warning. Instead of alerting the whole system in the entire county, we could alert the sirens that were within that actual polygon at risk for the storm. So that was a technology and we had mechanical sirens out there and we had to come up with a way for those mechanical sirens to talk to software and make that connection for them to communicate. So that was the very beginning of why we had to migrate from the old system to a newer system. So in 2012, there was an outdoor warning system, CIP. RFP went out seeking the upgrade to again to the polygon alerting. A relatively new company to the market had the lowest bid and at the time satisfied the needs of that RFP. So we went with that vendor. The contract provided 30 brand new battery powered speaker stations. And we're gonna talk a lot about the difference between the speakers and actual mechanical outdoor warning devices. And then there was a retrofit for the existing mechanical equipment and to base control stations. Also, at that same time, the cities, except for the city of Wichita, owned their sirens up to this point. In 2012, we made the decision that the county was going to take over ownership and manage the sirens pretty much from cradle to grave. So we signed MOUs with the cities and this is our responsibility of the sirens remain with the county. It grew our responsibility from 101 sirens to 152. And unfortunately, there wasn't much of a budget increase for us to take on that responsibility. So right from the very beginning, we started kind of building this budget hole, if you will, with our outdoor warning system. So I talked about mechanical versus electronic speakers. The mechanical is on the left. And if anyone's a Simon Sinek fan, we call this our celery. And then we have outdoor warning speakers, which is our chocolate cake. Sounds fantastic in the moment. Sounds like it's gonna fix all of our problems. And unfortunately, that is not the case. So we still have all of these in the ground right now throughout the county. We have 153 sirens. It's hodgepodge between mechanical and electronic speakers. And what we are finding out is these electronic speakers are not meant to be maintained. They're meant to be replaced. We've got electronics components sitting outside in our weather elements. And you're gonna see some pictures of some faulty products, if you will, and faulty installation that is also built a nightmare with these speaker stations. So initially, the attraction was we'd have voice capability. And there's a whole debate about if you actually want to use that voice to alert people. Because if people don't understand it, they're gonna go outside and say, what was that? And we're trying to tell people to go inside. So speakers don't always make sense. Regardless, we've got this hodgepodge out there throughout the community. So just doing a cost analysis of the difference, the mechanical rotating sirens, they last up to 70 years. And we have some in the ground that are more than 70 years old, still operating. They're simple. They're like maintaining a car. They got some gears, they got some belts, oil it preventive maintenance a little bit, and these things go on forever. The electronic speaker stations are a whole different ball of wax. And just to kinda do a quick comparison, brand new siren, brand new siren, it's actually a little bit cheaper upfront. But then when we start having to replace electronical motherboards, you can see the cross goes up significantly. Lot of motherboards, again, electronic components out here in the elements with installation that's getting moisture inside the wiring and the motherboards. Speaker drivers. So it's $210 for each one of these speakers and each siren has eight. So it's going to get costly. You can just see this right here from the very beginning. Again, we can't maintain these. We can only replace them when they go down. Battery chargers, and then there's some other components here. So we wind up total major parts, 4,325 to keep these mechanical sirens running versus replacing these sirens at 15,994. And you can do the math. It's actually cheaper for us just to buy a whole new entire siren instead of trying to replace components in these speaker systems. Not good, not good business model. So this is what I was talking about. These mechanical sirens, pretty simple, belt driven or some gears driven. Again, easy to maintain, just like a vehicle. You just gotta go out and give it some love once in a while and these things last forever. So the retrofit, how did we get these old mechanical sirens to talk to the software? We created a bird nest of sensors and wires to try to communicate what's happening in the mechanical system and translate that into electricity, into communicating with software. We were chasing these little sensors. Part of this retrofit is going to come into play. When my little pointer's not working now. So this little blue thing, that's the sensor. And that was kind of the component that helped communicate with our software. And what we were finding out during our work order analysis was that these sensors were faulty. If you calibrated them and it was hot, they would act up when it was cold. If you calibrated them when they were cold, they wouldn't be reliable when it was hot. So we were chasing our tail, thinking our sirens were broke and really they weren't. It was these sensors that weren't communicating very well. So again, electronic speakers, retrofitting the sensors. We have poor installation. I got some photos to show you. Some of y'all will remember once you start seeing the photos of like, I can't believe this is what we're doing. Water and corrosion, motherboard hard resets. So what we were also doing is sending a contractor out to hit a reset button at the cost of about $600 at a pop. And again, it was a lot that had to do with that sensor. It wasn't that it was a faulty siren. It was just an electronical issue. Cheaply made materials. We had a lot of damage when the horns damaged by hail and we'll see that in the photos. We got bird nests packed into some of these things. And the speaker system has a service life of 10 to 20 years. And like, if you remember, the mechanical system, we've got some in the ground over 70 years old. So we, 2012 was when we started installing these. Well, we're about 10 years in and we are spending a lot of money replacing these outdoor speakers because component replacement just doesn't make sense. So you can see some of the hail damage here. To know are these safety seals here. When these seals start to go, and you can see that these are damaged here, we start having problems with moisture getting inside each speaker station. I remember there's eight of them on each one of these sirens. So once you start getting water inside these, you can kind of imagine it's not gonna bode well with electronical components. Now, we talked to the manufacturer of these and we're no longer doing business with them. They, there's a lot of back and forth of who to blame on these things, but these were not meant really for our elements here in Kansas. We know we get hail a lot. We know we get these storms. So we need a durable product. And again, those mechanical sirens that we have in the ground have withstand, withstood these type of weather conditions for decades without giving us any issues. Bird nest is a big thing. We were told that birds will not get into these speaker systems and we have proven otherwise. So one of the things we did, and you guys all know Jonathan Mar. When John Mar and I got hired on, our first challenge was to analyze how we were spending our money on the sirens. And instead of just reporting how many work orders we were putting in, we started looking at, well, what was the work done? What was the outcome of the work order? And that's when we started finding these type of things that we weren't supposed to find, but we clearly did. So this were, this is where we were trying to figure out where do we strategize to manage the system? Because this way, the system was managing us. So bird nests, obviously, sound is not going to get through that. See if it plays a video. Yep. There's audio, but you don't need to hear. We're just pretty much saying, yeah, there's sound that's not gonna get through there. So we literally, John had gone up into the bucket truck with our contractor and actually watched them perform work orders and open these things up and see what was inside. This is water dripping out.
Already got water poured out of it, but I've only got about halfway off.
So to note, so the water in here pretty much is pulling up and traveling down these wires and down the pole into our electrical motherboard areas into our cabinets. So again, calling up the manufacturer saying, hey, this is what we're seeing. They actually flew out here, came out here and saw this and tried to kinda give us some resolutions to it, but it was out of our money. So we actually did spend money though, and we drilled wheat holes into these to try to help the water drain out of them. Also on the same at the bottom of the cabinet with the cabling and the conduit, trying to drill some holes so water moisture could leak out of it. But it's still definitely not a conducive solution to what the problems were. So as you can imagine, all of that water traveling down into a component and where all of our electronics are and our batteries are is not gonna be a good outcome. This is what the cabinets look like. And now, mind you, these have been installed 10 years ago. This was three years ago now that, so it was about seven years. And this is what our new sirens were looking like inside. Corrosion, all kinds of problems with connectors. And again, our mechanical sirens are sitting out there for 70 years, not having this problem. We're seeing this in our new product that's not even lasting us 10 years. That's what a cabinet is kinda supposed to look like when it's all nice and kinda cleaned up. There again, all of this electronic stuff is sitting in there having moisture and rain come down into it and sitting there and yeah. Again, more pictures. Literally, as we took this photo, water was slowly dripping right here onto these wires. All kinds of corrosion, corrosion here, and we should not be seeing that. This is absolutely not what should be happening in our outdoor warning system. Like I mentioned, we also try to get creative and drill wheat holes at the bottom also to help with some of the water to come out when we had it. But it's still that moisture sitting there in these motherboards and batteries just very, did very little to help improve the issue. So on top of that, we started having batteries explode inside of our cabinets. We actually have a video of a battery blowing and it blew the cabinet door open and we're like, oh my goodness. These are the same exact batteries we use for our ambulances. And clearly, we don't have these batteries blowing up in our emergency vehicles. So that caused another reason for us to dig into more about why are these batteries exploding? This is not normal. And it was chargers, again, to fit into this new technology. There were chargers that were overcharging these batteries and causing them to have too much voltage and boom, these things exploded. And of course, when batteries explode, it leaves a hot mess. We were spending a lot of money on our contractor to come clean this stuff up with baking soda and scraping up and cleaning. And then we started having some environmental issues with battery acid and things flowing down into the ground. So clearly, we had to stop the madness. So it was pretty much at this point, we stopped, we stopped what we were doing. We re-strategized exactly how we were gonna look at this system. And then on top of that, we found a bunch of zip ties. They decided to secure our wiring to poles using zip ties instead of using conduit or using staples. That's usually the industry standard. So we were again paying our contractor money to go attach these flying away cables that the public would tell us we got going on. I don't know. I have no explanation why they would choose to use zip ties outside. That we know that's not gonna be a long-term solution. So again, this is what we were spending our money on, our work orders. We were sending our contractor out to fix these things. And then on top of that, our poles are aging. We've got sirens, like I mentioned, in the ground since the 50s and power poles don't, or yeah, power poles don't last forever. So at the same time, we need to be looking at not just putting new siren heads up there, but also replacing some of these power poles that are aging. So every Monday at noon, we test the siren system. And green means good, red means bad, except for in this technology. We found out from reports of the public and sending staff out that some of the reds that we thought were not working, the sirens were sounding just fine. Then more concerning, we started getting calls saying, I couldn't hear my siren. My siren didn't go off, but it would show up green on our map. So that was really concerning. The data we were getting from our software and our weekly test was not accurately depicting what was happening out in the field. So we actually started recruiting some citizen volunteers to kinda help us be our eyes and ears out there. And we were, we are still dealing with this mess with trying to figure out what is actually happening out there. A lot of it is those sensors that I talked about miscommunicating what's actually happening with those sirens out in the field. So this is a busy slide, but I really just wanna highlight a couple of key points. The red should not be a cost to us and it's clearly half of the cost that we're spending our money on. Faulty sensors and faulty installation. These two should not exist. These are our normal operating costs to maintain an outdoor warning system. So we are spending almost $200,000 on an issue that should not be seen in our system. So again, this is the work of Anisa. I still gotta give her credit and John for spending hours and hours and hours analyzing the outcomes of our work orders instead of just tallying up what the work orders were that we were sending them out. And that's what this is the results of that. The outcome was sensors and faulty installation. So the annual cost, I didn't mention this yet, but 107 of our sirens have electrical charges to them. We are paying a meter charge to have these sirens have a trickle charge to them to keep them going for the ones that are on battery power. Historically, we spent between 70,000 and 164,000 in operations and maintenance. Plus, we had the ever revolving $110,000 CIP that was meant to install or replace five sirens a year. We weren't able to install new ones because we were having to use this money to replace all of these broken new sirens that we had out there. So this was a rabbit hole we were never gonna get out of. So the grand total, like I mentioned, is $243,000 that was coming out of our budget. And we should only be paying about 75,000 a year to maintain an outdoor warning system. And we're not alone. So we started looking more into this and finding out other cities were having similar problems with this particular model of using outdoor speakers. Nashville actually forklifted their entire system due to maintenance cost. Longmont, Colorado, they actually had a lawsuit in the middle of them replacing their system. They actually won their lawsuit and then San Francisco had a complete shutdown of their system too. Again, because the cost was just not manageable. So other Kansas jurisdictions, I did wanna mention, you know, this is again, a cultural thing. You're in the Midwest. We know we have tornadoes in pretty much just about every city, county within Oklahoma, Arkansas, Missouri, Kansas, Nebraska. They've got some sort of outdoor warning system because that's what we do. We have activities in the spring and summer where we're outdoors enjoying life. So the layered approach is with the outdoor warning. So Wyandotte County, this is where it gets different, is who maintains it and who pays for it. So in Wyandotte County, they have 88 sirens, cost them about 60,000 in maintenance. The county manages it just like what we do. And like I mentioned, we should be paying about 75,000 for our 100 plus, 150 plus sirens. So it's pretty comparable. Johnson County, I didn't get all of their details, but the county does manage the activation. But they have cities that actually buy the sirens, the hardware, the equipment that goes into the ground. Douglas County, the county manages it and they only have 44 sirens. Butler County, the city actually owned and maintained it. 911 manages the activation of it. And then Barber County, I used a small county because even a smaller county has cities owning and maintaining their system. So even our smaller counties have some sort of an outdoor warning system in place. I don't know of a county in Kansas that does not have some sort of an outdoor warning system. It may not be as big as ours or cover as much as ours does, but it is pretty much a cultural driven need for communication. So like I mentioned, we had to re-strategize that revolving $110,000 CIP because that was never gonna end and it wasn't enough to meet the needs to maintain our system, especially with population growth. We were just replacing broken parts and not able to expand. So again, staying on the current path, it would have been a big money hole for us. Path forward was to pivot away from speakers, go back to the mechanical system that works and meets our needs. Replace the current revolving CIP with a six-year CIP at the total cost of about 4.5 million dollars. And that was the presentation and the decision in 2002 moving forward. So this year, we're in year two of that six-year CIP. And I'll talk a little bit about where we're at in that project right there. And then through this, we're actually going green where we're using solar kits instead of electrical meters, which is going to wind up saving us, I think about 40,000 a year in utility costs that we don't need to have. And the solar kits are working fine. They're working in Oklahoma. There's other jurisdictions that are going more towards this. One, it gives us flexibility and where we can place our sirens. And two, it gets rid of the unnecessary electrical charge and it allows us to have backup power. A lot of our sirens right now that are hooked up to electrical meters, if that power grid goes down, there's no backup power source, which is a big concern of mine because we lose power in regular thunderstorms. And if there's a storm coming with a tornado, they may not have those sirens activated. And the solar kits will pay for themselves in two and a half years. And again, like I mentioned, the electrical grid does concern too. So we looked at the solar panels because of course we get hail and we're like, ooh, are these things gonna have to be replaced? Are they gonna get damaged? And they are built pretty strong to withstand. We've already had hail storms. Oklahoma and Texas have had hail storms and their products actually are still in place. They've had very little replacement issues with these. So also what we're doing is, this is the old map of coverage. And these red areas are like population growth areas where we don't have coverage. And there may be some outdoor activity areas in these areas. So initially, we were just kind of putting them in the ground where we had electrical connections and trying to strategize somewhat of the coverage. We went through and actually did a digitalized software sound plan with our vendor to see, well, what could we have? What could we do better? Looking at traffic noise, buildings, obstacles in the way of siren communication. And so there's a whole different strategy as well as where we place our sirens. Again, keeping in mind, our focus is to alert those outdoors and we're not gonna put a siren in every neighborhood. But where are their parks? Where are their trails? Where are their shopping areas where people, the general public may be out away from their technology, away from their phones, their Noah weather radios are at home. So their Noah weather radios not gonna do them any good unless they're carrying it around. So that is our focus, but we also wanna be mindful of the growth development that's happening in our communities. So 2023 was year one of the project. Sirens were replaced in Cheney, Mount Hope, pretty much in the western part of the county. In 2024, right now, we are, any date, actually this week, we're supposed to get a receipt of 30 new sirens that's gonna be replaced in Derby, Hayesville and Mulvane. It's also gonna add coverage to the southeast Sedgwick County area, east of McConnell Air Force Base, pretty much where we had the tornado go through in 2022. So where we started doing some more analysis. So again, 2020, this is what we were paying. Maintenance about 53,000, the electrical charges for our sirens to sit there was costing us 40,000. Started kinda re-strategizing things. We weren't sending our contractor out in 2021 to check every single work order. We were trying to strategize what the actual cause was. If it was a sensor, we're not gonna spend time and money to send somebody out. So the cost to maintain the system started dropping. 2022, again, re-strategizing, using volunteers, using our staff to go out and observe some of these sirens that we didn't think were working to confirm they were working and vice versa. 2023, we only spent 15,000 in maintenance costs because we were, this is the year we started adding new sirens instead of fixing the old broken sirens. And then while we did that, we're also removing the, some of those electrical accounts with the solar panel kits. So again, you can see the cost to maintain the system is dropping. And this year, we're actually predicting only $1,500 in maintenance costs because our sirens are working better and we're maintaining them. We're doing preventive maintenance on the mechanicals. We're replacing the broken ones and our electrical cost is gonna be down to about 29,000. At the end of the CIP, all of the costs for our sirens should be around that 75,000 mark for us to maintain it. And it actually may, we're hoping it would actually even be less than that. So we're already starting to see some of the cost savings and we're just in year two of this six-year CIP program. If we discontinue now, we, excuse me, we will have still those sensor issues with the mechanical and electrical sirens operating on two different software systems, some using sensors, some not using sensors. The electrical components that are still in the ground, we're gonna be replacing those. Again, it's almost cheaper to get a whole new siren and replace motherboards that are gonna go out. Complex software management due to odd and old, I'm sorry, old and new software through this transition. And right now, because we cannot just wipe out all of the old sirens at one time, we have to do this in phases. We have zones throughout the county that are still targeted warning, but they're not as finite as the polygons are. Because like right now, I mentioned this year, Derby, Hayesville, that southeast part of the county is all in a zone. So once we get those all onto the new system, then we can narrow down that zone into the polygons. But until we get the whole county kind of replaced into this one system, we have to zone it out as we're installing the new sirens. And I know that sounds kinda messy. If I lose you, if you have questions, by all means, please let me know. So the summary is we can manage a system instead of the system managing us. And again, looking at that root cause analysis of what work was being done to maintain the siren system really made us smart on what we can do better. Moving away from unpredictable maintenance cost to a more predictable preventive maintenance. No need for the current revolving 110,000 CIP. Once we're done with this six-year CIP, which four years left, that should be it. There should be no more CIP for the outdoor warning system. We can maintain mechanical equipment at a much lesser cost than replacing electronic components. And then we can use, allow the system to grow as communities grow. Our budget should be able to handle population growth. Or we can have conversations about strategically thinking about who should flip the bill for population growth on these outdoor warning systems. So yeah, 4.5 million dollars upfront, spread out over six years will allow the program to sustain for decades without needing that revolving CIP. So a lot of fun information. It's, it's a mess out there. We're trying to clean it up. But we do need to see this project all the way through. Like I mentioned, we're in year two of a six-year CIP that we talked about in 2022.
Okay. Thank you, Julie, for the presentation. That's helpful for me.
Absolutely.
So I haven't had this. There's 107 electrical sirens still remaining. Is that?
We're actually down now. I think we, I think we removed 13 last year. So we should be under 100 now.
100. And this is year two and the total remaining CIP is just south of $3 million remaining of six-year CIP. Last question. In 2012, a decision was made that this is county responsibility. So this is squarely in our purview?
Yes. Yep. Unless we go back on that, but that's a whole other discussion to have that will probably be messy.
Very helpful.
Yep.
Other questions? Commissioner Dennis?
Okay. Julie, I couldn't tell from the maps because they weren't finite enough, but do we have sirens on McConnell?
Well, McConnell does have sirens, but they do maintain their own siren system.
Okay. And do we trigger those or how do they get triggered on McConnell?
They, they are directly connected to the weather service, just like we are. So we actually do not activate their sirens. But we do match the weekly tests. We did sync together. So we're all testing at the same time and they're not sounding sirens at different times. Like we had some issues with that, I guess.
Thank you, Chairman. So these new solar powered sirens, is there still a control box at the bottom of the pole?
Yes.
And so there's, there's conduit that runs to the top where the siren actually is located.
Yes.
And the new sirens that are solar powered there are also mechanical speaker type sirens?
Yes.
And so the new ones we're putting in, are we able to solve some of those water infiltration issues?
Yes.
They're sealed up better. They're not having that problem any longer?
Correct. Yep.
Did you actually say in here somewhere, maybe I missed it, what is the cost for a, if you wanted to install a brand new system, a brand new pole, brand new control panel, brand new siren, radio controlled, solar powered? How much does that cost per one?
So we actually, we actually kinda get a discount for bulk purchasing. So in, we spend about 17,000, brand new, new pole in the ground, all of the components. If you were to buy one, it would be about 22 to 25,000.
Okay, so 17 is our number. I like the idea of, again, I just looking at these two maps here. There seems to be an awful lot of overlap on our current map. And I don't know that the overlap is necessary. It seems like there's cost there that's just maybe unnecessary if you to identify some sirens that have too much overlap and reduce those and add new sirens in places where we have shortage, you may not need more sirens.
Correct. Well.
How many sirens are on these two maps that are shown here?
The map on the left would be 151 or 150, 150 sirens. The map on the left would be a hundred and fifty-one or a hundred and fifty, hundred and fifty sirens. The one on the right actually, I believe, goes up to about a hundred and eighty. We actually do add sirens to it because there's a lot of areas that we are concerned with not having any kind of coverage.
Is there some type of standard that says if, if a population area, it doesn't have coverage, but the population density, it's some, some threshold that would trigger us to a desire for it? But, because obviously some places in the county, we're not going to even try because it's so remote. The question is, you know, every, I assume every city, all twenty cities of Cedric County have some sirens, I assume.
Yes.
And the question is, these, these red areas have under, they're, they're underserviced, if you will. If you were to hit those red areas and fill those in. I don't have any more sirens that would take to get there, but again, I feel like we have too many sirens in some places on that map on the left, so.
So one thing the map doesn't really show is topography. We, we go off of this map as a starting point for the sound plan, but we actually still go out. We were just in the city of Derby, actually, last week, because of hills and buildings and traffic noise. We want to also go out there with eyes on confirming that the map is saying this is the best location. But like Derby's has several hills and some of these are placing the sirens on the bottom of these hills and they're not going to be able to project out to where we want them to go. So we may shift them a little bit to higher ground. But again, we're focusing on those areas that have general public members outdoors. So the schools, the, the sporting event fields, again, like I mentioned, kind of shopping areas. Mobile home parks, we certainly are, want to make sure that we're making our vulnerable population that are at risk, giving them as much warning as we can as well. It's, there is no mathematical that says based on population. Again, this is, there's no mandate that says this is how you do the math and figure out where you put them. It's more, again, our goal is to warn those who may be outside away from technology, not to wake people up who are in their homes.
So these smartphones that we all seem to carry around, is there, is this a default thing that happens if you have a cell phone? That automatically is set up, that the weather warnings are pushed out through smartphones? Is that, is that a standard feature for all smartphones that are?
Uh, here we are. We have, we are members of the Integrated Public Alert Warning System. It's called IPaaS. When the National Weather Service issues a polygon, all the different layers of communication get activated simultaneously. So the sirens, your cell phones, the runners on the TV, that's all part of this integrated platform that we help manage. So yes, when your cell phones are going off, the sirens should be going off. There should be runners on the TV, radio should have their announcements as well. And the Noah weather radios.
My phone doesn't go off on Mondays at noon. I'm just wondering why.
Oh, we have a test mode, so we don't, we are very cautious that we don't want to overwarn and have people being so annoyed that they start disabling alerts and things of that nature. So the test mode does only do, and again, the reason we do our sirens is because we want to make sure our siren system is working. Their mechanical parts, you know, we, we hope our car starts every day, but once in a while it may not. And the same thing with our sirens. So that's why we test them weekly.
Do these new sirens have some type of better, more reliable feedback, feedback so that you know they're either working or not working?
Uh, yes, because we don't have to rely on those sensors. It, it is direct communication with the actual siren itself without having to go through some sort of man-made sensor to translate language.
Back to my previous question, um, do we know what percentage of Central County residents do not have? I mean, I would probably eliminate children below a certain age perhaps because I think they should probably not have these. But how many people out there have smartphones that, what percentage of our population has a smartphone, I guess you'd say? Do we even know that number?
I, I don't have that data. I think that would be a challenge to come up with that data, but we can try to see if we can come up with some numbers for that.
I, I guess for me personally, it seems like I am, when we, when we see weather looks a little interesting. We have both radio and TV, internet, smartphones, and then outdoor sirens. Maybe there's even other things out there I'm not mentioning. But we have so many different overlapping warning systems. I, to me, it'd be, it'd be almost impossible to not be aware when weather's coming in, something is happening. So I don't know how many people out there basically are left with no warning. If, if there is, um, we don't have big, there's no way to really ascertain that problem. How, how many people actually are out there? They don't have a warning? We don't know.
And, and it's really because it's based on what actually we're doing. I know a lot of folks, if they're watching sports or something, they may have their phones in their, not in their pocket. Or if it's not, um, uh, some people don't want to go off the grid and they just want to be away from that. The TVs I caution with because a lot of streaming services now, that, that warning is only going to go through your local channel. So if you're not watching a local channel and you're streaming Netflix or Hulu or whatever, you're not going to see that warning on the TV. The cell phones, like I mentioned, we participated in that we attest. And we turned out that some people that were in the polygon did not get the warning and some people outside the polygon did get the warning. So the FCC is, is struggling with this nationwide to even get that pinned down to be more accurate and more reliable. But even that cell phone has its faults as well with, with learning.
Right. So my questions. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah, thanks, Chairman. I'll just wrap around that. I'm just kind of one of the persons that brought this up in our CIP discussion. And so Julie, thanks for the refresher and I, I still question it, but I get it. Thanks for the other counties and the other peer city-type information. And, and the good news, I think, is that if, if what you're saying is accurate, I assume it is, that, that that the expense after we do this will be minimal and it'll be more of a maintenance cost. It won't be a CIP-type cost. So there is a rainbow at the end of this storm.
Thank you. Julie, thank you so much. Appreciate your work on this.
Yep.
All right, Tom?
Morning, Chairman and Commissioner Vanderdilts with Facilities and Steve Stonehouse with Department, Director of Corrections. Here to present the residential, uh, juvenile residential complex. So a little history here. Um, last year DOC presented at a B O C C staff meeting the inefficiencies of having the juvenile residential facility and the juvenile field services programs miles apart. In addition, each program has concerns with their location. Currently, the juvenile residential facility is not large enough and does not allow for easy expansion. Being constructed with a gable roof, the ma- major additions being considered are very difficult to design and keep cohesive with the existing structure. Maintenance on the facility is not easy with HVAC units jammed into the attic and many components have reached end of life. Remodeling the facility will require us to update the building, the current building to code standards. And when designing, we battle the functional organization of practicality while working with the existing structure. For example, the placement of a existing structural wall may create a less than ideal layout when you're remodeling. On the JFS lease, the landlord has, has another tenant he is moving into the building and will not renew our lease, which expires at the end of this year. Due to the facility concerns and inefficiencies gained by DOC and the children they serve, the juvenile services building came to fruition. This would unite both programs under one roof, one roof and on one juvenile complex with other juvenile services. This is the ideal solution for the Department of Corrections. However, last year when we met on this matter, it was requested that facilities provide alternatives to the twenty million dollar juvenile services building. To make use of the existing JRF structure, Facilities and Corrections worked with their on-call architect to redesign the facility and construct additions to the required space increase. The solution still has inefficiencies and concerns that we could not resolve with the building footprint. If this option were pursued, we would still need to find an option or a solution for JFS. We considered three options for JFS, building a new facility, buying an existing and remodeling, or continuing to lease space, which is subject to market rates and can be volatile at times. Here we have the existing square feet of our buildings on the juvenile campus here, JDF, JRF and JFS. And then the square footage for our three options. The juvenile services building would be approximately forty-nine thousand square feet. Juvenile residential facility after the expansion and remodel would be just shy of thirty-three thousand square feet. And the JFS building would remain at sixteen thousand square feet. Here are our estimates and these estimates we assembled last year. So there may be some of these numbers may change. But last year, we estimated the juvenile services building at just over twenty million. The remodel for the juvenile residential facility would be seven point four million. Option one for the juvenile field services building, if we were to do the, the residential remodel. We take, our three options here for juvenile field services are listed below. So option one would be a new building and land at approximately eight point six million. Combined with the juvenile residential facility for sixteen million. Option two would be to purchase an existing building and remodel for JFS at approximately six million. Combined with the juvenile residential remodel for approximately thirteen point eight million. Or a lease for JFS, ten years with TI, which is tenant improvements or remodeling to, to fit JFS into a new lease. Is approximately six mil- million combined with the residential remodel for thirteen million. Here is a floor plan of the existing juvenile residential facility. Here's what the remodel and expansion would look like for juvenile residential. Everything that's in blue is existing. Everything in yellow would be expanded or in addition to. And you can kind of see how spread apart we are across the gym to the classroom and other areas with the current layout. Here would be the juvenile services building. This would be a, everything on the, on the left here would be a single story. And then that, that green section off to the right would be the second story, which would be for admin only. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Steve with Corrections.
Hello, Steve.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Steve Stonehouse with the Department of Corrections. Um, thanks for the opportunity to talk about this project again and, and answer any questions that you may have. I'll just briefly recap, um, what we're talking about here. Juvenile residential facility was opened in nineteen ninety-four as a, an alternative to detention. Kids only access JRF through a court order. So instead of staying in detention, it can be moved over to JRF. It's a community-based program. Um, it's right there on the campus of, near JDF, between JDF and the courthouse. In law, it allows additional contact with the community, with their parents, families. They wear their own clothes, go to school, things like that. Starting in about nineteen, excuse me, twenty eighteen, we started talking about inefficiencies of JRF and could we look at a better solution, specifically the safety issues regarding the classroom and the gym. Blacking group in classrooms, the lobby is inefficient and we've talked about that. And since JRF has lost a lease, we have two programs in there and it's, it, it's functioning, but it's not ideal. There's no storage space. There's only, um, no way to screen folks, the lobby's inadequate and things like that. So then we came up with a proposal to, just to the south of JDF and JAC, um, to remodel JRF or the options that Andrew was talking about. And at a point of reference, JDF and JAC are located in the top-left corner and juvenile field services is in the bottom-right. Um, many of our, our programs function as a system. People go through. It's not linear. People start at JDF with an arrest, may go to JAC, may not. May go to juvenile field services, may go to juvenile residential facility, may go to ERC and they may go back depending on violations and things like that. So, um, and then many families have multiple kids who are involved in our system. So we went with the premise that putting kids, all services in one location was the best idea. Um, because as somebody goes back and forth, they're all, they would all be in one location instead of bouncing around the city. Um, there were some questions about what our populations looked like. So we've been keeping this data for decades. So to the left, the, the smart person who keeps this, we have more data, so if you want to see, we've got it. But from two thousand and seven to twenty twenty-three, um, you can see there's a definite downward trend sparked by the red numbers which are fit in detention. Senate Bill three sixty-seven really reduced the kids that can go into detention and made them only be high-risk or chronic offenders. Um, what we do see though is the, the percentage of the green and the yellow, which is an alternative to detention. The percentage is higher than it was in the past. So that's kind of where the growth is in those services. Now, we also know from twenty nineteen to today, those are all, nothing's real. The pandemic made nothing real. We don't know what our demand is. I can't tell you what our demand is going to be because the courts are just now getting back up to number, um, where it needs to be. But we do know that our alternatives remain a good percentage of what we need to be serving. The good thing is that, um, we have been able to find deficiencies with our home-based services by locating them with JFS. So we can take as many kids as the court authorizes. And also our detention center only has a hundred and eight beds. So whenever we get above a hundred and eight, we couldn't take them all back in detention. If something happened and, and we had to bring everybody back in, it's not cool. So as we keep that number down, um, we maintain our flexibility. It's also cheaper to have kids in alternatives. JDF costs, the cost of care is right at two forty-nine a day is what it costs the county to operate that. JRF is right at a hundred dollars a day and home base is twenty dollars a day. So the less secure options are cheaper for, for kids. About two forty-nine at JDF and that's just cost of care. It fluctuates. Um, a hundred dollars for JRF and about twenty, twenty-four dollars for homeless. So the numbers of the kids served, um, through April, we served thirty-three kids at JRF. Um, six were alternative detention. So kids who get arrested can't put it in detention, but the court will say go ahead and put them in JRF. Um, until they can have court warnings. We've served thirty-nine kids this year. Last year we had thirty-seven. Um, during the dark days, it was lower, but twenty nineteen was two sixty-three. So that's probably more of a realistic number of what the system would look like maybe. But it is a, it's a educated guess.
Steve, pause. Two sixty-three is the number versus thirty-nine year-to-date. You, you say that the more actual number we should be considering is the two sixty-three?
I think so. Um, this, we, we were operating at twenty-four beds at that time. And, um, so we could have more kids at one time. Right now we're operating at ten. Ten plus one, we, we hold one bed for police protective custody kids. So if we were, and right now we can only go up to sixteen beds because we've taken, taken other eight beds offline to put the evening reporting center in there.
So where, where's the difference? Where are they being held? The difference?
They're being held in detention.
At JDF?
Yes. There is just not being authorized. We, we did see an increase at home base, so the judge would set some parameters of behavior expectations for the kid and the family and they wait at detention, then they can be released onto home base. So. Yeah, so that's, that's how many kids were served there. And so that's about, um, a thousand fine days and over two thousand fine days, um, for kids there. The reason I say it that way because the hundred dollars difference per day, it's important to remember that, that that's, that those are costs that we're not incurring when those kids are over there. And juvenile field services, um, looks weird, probably about that, um, serves three hundred and seventy-nine in state fiscal year twenty-three, uh, three hundred and twenty-eight. So our numbers continue to go up there as we're recovering from the pandemic and the court gets caught up with everything. And ERC is serving, um, two hundred and thirty-three kids. So there, overall, there is a reduced demand, but a higher percentage of kids in the alternatives. Cost of care at JDF is signa- significantly more than the alternatives. So that's, um, where I feel, well, it's a better, better place for kids to be in an alternative detention if they can safely do that. Though the efficiencies we've talked a lot about for the organizational, um, benefits. Something to consider for, for clients and their families is the idea of a one-stop shop. I just want to preface that by saying, although we have multiple populations under one roof, they're not living together or programming together. So somebody who's at ERC is not going to be programming with somebody from JRF because they're in different parts of the, of the system. So if we have a child in need of care who is held on a seventy-two-hour sinkhole, he or she is not going to group with juvenile for, um, field services. They're just waiting for three days for VCF and the um, police department to figure out what to do with, um, their family situation. They're not intermingling. So we do think that customized build would allow us to reduce staff and support staff. And we've reduced a manager by putting one administrator over kind of the field, the community-based programs and one administrator over the, um, institutions over JDF and JAC. So. So we are trying to find as many ways to be efficient with these opportunities as we have, as we can. They, for the families, we know that the majority of our kids come to us with trauma. And if kids can and their families can go to one place, be familiar with that, they won't have to go through the ups and downs of being in a new building, seeing new staff, being seeing new environments that they've never been in before. When we spoke with different places about this program, the Community Task Force, who was looking at into Cedric Lofton situation, their comment on this program was that they were in favor of this of this idea of evidence based design in that is be less institutionalized and more home like, more community based than keeping them in detention or another alternative. So we have presented this concept at the juvenile court to Team Justice, which is the Juvenile Corrections Advisory Board, Community Task Force and the Detention Utilization Committee. And the positives we heard from them were the less institutionalization that I talked about, access to increased services and resources, one stop shop and ability for us to expand if we needed to by being in that one location. So this, just to remind you of what we're talking about, the red cable building is J R F and the new footprint would would be the outlined red dashes. So that's down and dirty.
So Steve, a couple of questions. You did a good job explaining what J R F does. Can you, for the public, explain exactly what the Early Reporting Center is and juvenile field services? Like, what are the functions of these?
So the juvenile field services was created in nineteen ninety six due to a previous wave of juvenile justice reform. And it offers juvenile intensive supervised probation, case management for kids who are in the correctional facility and a small amount of conditional release for kids coming out on probation. So that's the the clients that are served there. A hundred percent of the kit, those kids have been at J R F at some point. Because we talked about the system, they go up and down. So they started there. The Evening Reporting Center came about because of Senate Bill three sixty seven, four or five years ago, which took away all out of home placements. So communities were challenged with coming up with, how are we going to serve the same population of kids with no out of home placement? So the Evening Reporting Center is a regional collaboration with the counties, the juvenile districts that touch us, Harvey McPherson, Butler, El Greenwood, Calley and Sumner and Cedric County serve kids with programming, including school Monday through Saturday. And that program is funded by the state through two different grants through the Juvenile Justice Oversight Committee. And that is operated by juvenile field services.
Okay, that's helpful. Steve, I've had a lot of, I'm publicly supportive of these changes with juvenile juvenile campus, but I I I'm more interested, I care deeply about the infrastructure in the building. I'm more interested in the programs and the services. And what I really need to know is by putting these things into one collaborative space, a campus, are we able to do more with programming and services? Are they going to turn into better outcomes for these kids? Or is this just, is this only staff efficiencies?
Well, I would say that the hope is so. Everything I do as a professional in corrections for thirty years has been with the my kid test. So if if I would, if I'm going to do something to a kid, it's going to be the same thing that I would do to my own kid or with my own kid or for my own kid. So the hope is that by consolidating these services, we will improve outcomes for kids and families. Senate Bill twenty twenty one or twenty twenty two, what was last year? That allowed us to serve children in need of care who started, who are starting on the road to juvenile delinquency. The problem with our current situation is we have no place to see them because we don't mix populations. So we can do it. We don't have a place to put them. We don't have a place to service them. This building more than allows for that. So the idea, so for us to be in compliance with that law, we need a place to be able to serve these kids in a group setting by our staff. This would allow that to happen. So right now they're not getting any. We have an assessment saying these kids need juvenile offender services or services geared towards stopping their delinquency. And and we're not able to efficiently leverage that.
With this type of facility, are you able to bring more community models in? The mentorship?
Yes. What we've heard from grassroots organizations is that they've lost a lot of the community programming ability in schools or things like that. So this would have a separate entrance to the gyms and classrooms. So they would not intermingle with the clients who are who are served there because they're obviously a different population of kids. But the idea would be to increase community participation in this in this setting.
Could we, could I, could I get a commitment from staff that we're going to really try to engage the community in some of these mentorship programs? And there's significant number of people that tell me that they can't get into J D F for a variety of reasons. Some of it is because their personal backgrounds, but they want to get involved in the mentorship side of things. Would this allow opportunities?
This would allow, so this would allow the space, the other opportunity would have to be a well, no, it wouldn't because they would have no connection with the licensed facility. So yes, they could come into this building. There's no, there's no issue.
We could engage the community organizations on a broader level.
Broader level, yes. Without going through us, we would reserve the building for them like you do at the Cedric County Park. I can reserve that building right now and use it. I wouldn't have to be there as a county member because they're not interacting with kids in the license.
That's helpful.
That's that's the barrier to having them come in is that licensing regulations from our friends at D C F does not not allow some people with some backgrounds to be around them.
Fellows.
Yeah. Yes, even though they've spent twenty years, thirty years.
In recovery.
Yep.
Okay, other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have a number of questions. Appreciate the reminder of some of these things, but let's go through a few of these things together.
You want me to flip back?
No, it's okay. Just I'm just, I don't know. Let's just talk about, first of all, why would it, why would a kid be in J D F?
Kids are in J D F when they are after, well, after arrest, the easy way, after arrest for a crime that combination of a crime and their personal situation gives them a score on the risk tool to put them into detention.
Can you give me an example?
So somebody's arrested for burglary. It's a felony, so they would get seven points. And they have been there before, so they get two extra points. So they hit nine points, so they go into detention.
And these are kids that have been there, there seems to be some intention by the D A to charge them with that crime. And they're, they're working their way to the.
They will be held at detention for forty eight hours while the district attorney and law enforcement determine if they're going to charge.
They're going to pursue that a charge and they're going to stay in J D F or they're going to find bond, which way.
Well, they.
They're going to, they're not going to go to J R F or.
No, they may.
Anyplace else. They're going to stay in J D F if they're if they're incarcerated.
No.
Where are they going to, where are they going to go?
The court can keep them in detention, can let them go home, can put them at the shelter, can put them on home base.
And you say shelter, which one?
Juvenile residential facility.
J R F. So some of these kids that have been charged with crimes may be in J R F.
Yes. Okay. They, the exact same criteria, it's it's the same kids, except for that one group.
Okay. So the. Clarify again, that one group is what? What's the difference?
Police, police protective custody.
Okay.
When somebody's arrested, we're we're just talking about teenagers. When a teenager is, it has contact with law enforcement officers and the law enforcement has placed them into protective custody because of they're investigating a situation in the home. Ninety percent of those kids go to the children's home to wait for their three, three days.
Let's talk about a kid who is involved in some type of violent crime. What happens to that child?
The same, same exact process.
End up in J R F.
They could end up in J R F. They're they're there right now. They've always been there.
Right. And, okay, let's talk about, if the kid doesn't go to J D F and he goes straight to J R F, why would a kid be there?
So if they're young and the court, the statute says that special care should be taken for those who are twelve and under. So if the court says, yes, I want him not to go home, but he can, it talked about alternative detentions. I want him to stay at J R F instead of J D F while the district attorney has forty eight hours. The judge can allow that to happen.
Well, and they would want to be in J R F because it's it's a little bit less harsh of an environment, perhaps.
Yes.
So you only have ten, ten beds plus the one for protective custody. So out of those ten beds, how do you keep that ten year old from the seventeen year, sixteen year old that's committed to violent crime?
We don't.
They intermingle, don't they?
Yep.
Okay, then you mentioned earlier about some sink kids potentially being in J R F. Please, or J D F, what would you, please clarify, what did you just say a few minutes ago?
The sink kids, the.
There's some sink kids, we we take some sink kids here and there. They end up in.
Custody?
No, well, maybe, I don't know, you tell me, but these are.
Police protective custody, we save one bed because if the children's home doesn't have room for them or will not accept them, their options are to wait at J I A C or to stay over at J R F.
I was over there Friday and you guys said you had a couple of sink kids in your system somewhere. Where were they?
They were at J I A C.
J I A C.
They were waiting for their foster care provider to pick them up. They weren't being.
They were there for several days at least.
These ones weren't at that specific time. The kids that were J I A C were not.
Okay. So do you have sink kids that stay in the facilities somewhere overnight?
Yes, they can, yes.
How many do you ever, what's the maximum they ever have?
I think three.
And where would they be? Which facility?
J I A C.
They'd be at J I A C, not at J R F.
No, we only have one, but J I A C's not licensed. It's just a office building, so they can stay there.
And you mentioned earlier that J F S would be, are there are there kids that are getting community based services to J F S?
Oh, yes.
That are not kids who spent time at J D F or J R, J R F. Then again, they're not residential or detention.
I'm sure.
There's a kids who are in J F S because they generally, where I understand it, it's under three sixty seven. The the judges can give them an option of thirty days of J R F or they can do community based services usually for six months as a program that maybe could be longer or shorter, but usually I think we recommend around six months of these kids getting community based services, if you will, and we're going to deliver those at J R F now with this going forward. So the question is, some of those kids in J R, Ju- Ju- Ju-ville Field Services getting community based services. They are kids who've never spent time in J D F or J R F. They're just kids that are there for getting community based services.
Yes, they're in probation, yes.
And you're not going to mingle these kids, these kids that are J F S, community based services, you're not going to mingle them with the J O kids that have spent time that have spent time in.
They're all J Os.
There's a difference. And the highlight the difference is just a minute. So there are kids that spent time in J D F because they committed violent crimes that are now in J R F. They're juvenile offender children, they're being adjudicated, adjudicated, they're they're being managed in some way. But they're they're spending time in J R F. And now you've got kids who have not been charged with that type of crime, who are J F S kids.
No.
No?
No. You're wrong.
Okay.
One hundred percent of the kids at J F S are adjudicated juvenile offenders.
Do they spend time in J D F or J R F?
Some.
But there are some that they did not.
Yes.
Okay. And these kids have a conviction, you're telling me.
They have all kids at J F S have a conviction, one hundred percent.
What about the E R C kids?
One hundred percent.
Hundred percent have a conviction?
Yes.
But some of them have never spent time incarcerated anywhere?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, the the, you don't have to go to J D F to get.
Okay.
Probate.
And we talked about the, we have some violent offenders at J D F and some at J R F. What's kind of the the low end of the conviction scale, if you will, for these kids that might be it, that might be at J F S? What kind of crime might be committed that's maybe not the violent crime? There's maybe, maybe, maybe they stole something or.
Well, sure, it could be theft. There could be drug charges involved. There could be. It's hard to say nonviolent because when you're a victim of crime, it's pretty, feels pretty violent. Criminal damage to property, it could be that. The kids that we see at J J D F are a lot of aggravated assaults, aggravated robberies. There are murder kids who have been or accused of murder. So it's a, it's a, there are, there probably are some misdemeanors who have been to J F S.
Okay, and you did mention earlier, the J F S kids that are getting community based services. Many of these kids are 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 basically coming off parole, going back to the community. We're basically transitioning them back to being out of our control, so to speak. We're transitioning them back to community. They've served their time, they've done their thing, we're going to make sure they're thinking straight as far as we're concerned. We hand them back out to the community. At some point we end it. And a lot of the kids enter end up in J F S, that's what they're doing. They're 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 transitioning back to private sector, if you will. Other words, these kids are on a probation, we're we're trying to hand them off back, we're trying to say we're done. These are kids, we're going to transition back out of our control.
Yes.
We're moving them away from us, okay? So.
It's a deep end of the, it's a deep end of the system.
Right. I guess my point is, the kids that are in that status are essentially in the same facility, getting the same services as kids that are sitting there waiting for adjudication for violent crimes or all kinds of other crimes. They're in the same building, getting the same services from the same people.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a concern, okay. Let's talk a little bit about the blue chart there. You have there talks about they have arrests, they go to J I they go to J I A C. They are dispositioned somewhere, they either go to, and this is really hard to read because it's so small.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, let's go on. I like your chart better than mine because at least I can read it. If a kid is going to J F S, some of these kids are going to be there potentially daily, is that correct?
Or, yes, at E R C, yes.
They are, they are in the community, they report to the facility to get their services.
Yes.
Could be several times a week, it could be daily, whatever rate, whatever rate that the courts have decided they're going to be there reporting for the services.
Yep. Yes.
And there are people that that are in the court system above that that are, let me find it where it's at. Losing track. The sentencing, the juvenile courthouse.
Yes.
There. That's usually when they're trying to figure out what to do with this child and what type of consequence will happen for them. So they have to visit the courthouse, maybe several times during the time where they're going to see a judge and and sentencing has happened. They're going to see their, how many times will someone get? Typically, one of these kids ends up at J F S, how many times have they gone to the courthouse, you think? On on, yeah, five times, ten times, five times.
A low, a low number.
Okay, could be ten times, let's just say. Okay, good. And if they go to J F S though for six months, they could be going there how many times?
Thirty.
A month?
Yeah.
Right, so they could be a hundred eighty times.
Yes.
Right, that's what I thought. If they're at J D F, they're 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 behind, it's a secure facility, they're not leaving.
Right.
Okay, so some of the kids in J D F or even in J R F, they might have reason to go to the court back. Again, but those things being closely located might be some, some reason why J R F kids or J D F kids are close to the juvenile courthouse complex. Because they're going back and forth between a judge, courtroom and back to where they're staying.
Yes.
Right. But the J F S kids don't necessarily have to go back and forth through the court. They're they're basically handled by an I S O that are dealing with them at the J F S.
Right.
In this case, J F S or, actually, I am correct, the Ju- Ju-ville Field Services location where they report to. The I S O is is interfacing with these kids at that, at the J F S facility.
These, so these kids can also pick up new charges or have probation violations when they go back for complaint of a probation violation back to court. So they're all start to, so a number go to detention, a number go to the J R F waiting. They're incorporated, that probation violations or having a charge.
I know we're losing this space at Terry Street Mall, but just for reference sake, how many miles or minutes is it between the two facilities?
Ten minutes?
How many miles do you think? Three miles?
Three miles.
Three miles, okay.
You're right. Trying to think of a mileage reimbursement that I've seen lately.
Yeah.
For the same, that's how I see things.
All right. You did say something earlier, I didn't catch what you said. You said something like a hundred dollars per day where we are not incurring. How much would you have said now?
That, that one, the cost of care?
Yeah, the cost of care, something we're we're not incurring a hundred dollars because we are doing J, I guess, J R F versus J D F, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that's the.
So reduction, so the kids are in J R F, it's less expensive.
Yes.
Okay. In either case, if they're at J D F or J R F, is the cost of that being borne by the state or by the county?
One hundred percent at J D F is the county. J R F, the medical card is open. So if somebody has Medicaid either through the child welfare contractor or through their family circumstance, medic, medical costs are borne by the state. If they have Medicaid.
But their, but their.
Their room and board is by the.
Their supervision and their meals and stuff is borne by the county.
One hundred percent.
Okay.
That's a little bit of the reduction in costs is that Medicaid pays for some of those kids' medical care and treatment and things like that.
Okay, so I want to make sure we're, we're, I want to make sure I understand this correctly. When we have kids that are J F S clients and they happen to be getting services at J R F, apparently we're doing that today. I guess because we're doing some Ju- J F S services today at the J R F facility.
Yes.
When did that start?
When did the Evening Reporting Center start or when did we?
We, I, we've been doing J R F and and evening E R C at Terry Street Mall for quite a long time.
Yes.
When did this transition over to JRS?
I'm looking at Mario because he
Into twenty-two.
Into twenty-two, beginning of twenty-three is when.
Why did that happen?
We lost our lease at Harry Street Mall and there was space available for the supervision piece of JFS for the probation officers, but there was no easy fix for the evening reporting center. So right around December, January, December of twenty-two, January of twenty-three, we moved the ERC into one dorm and then JRF reopened April, May, May of last year.
And so is there still some services being done at the Harry Street Mall?
Yes, the the supervision officers are all at the Harry Street Mall.
Okay, then there's, I guess maybe I'm moving towards some conclusions here, but if we did this, uh, juvenile services building, I guess it's called JSB now, new acronym for all.
With juvenile on the front.
Yeah, um, if we do that, and there's a, there's a, I think your last slide showed a picture of what that would look like, that dashed red line. Okay, that, that dash red line is the entire complex. Is that correct?
That's the current. This is the current.
Yeah.
And that.
Does that include parking and everything else?
Clarified Mr. Haney, but I believe it includes parking.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, um, if you need to expand this in the future, where are you going to go? We talked about it has expansion capabilities. I, I don't know what that means because you talked, you said it could be expanded in the future.
Well, if we, if we do it right, there will be, there will be flexibility in the, on the first floor to have the rooms to serve. If we didn't want to license it for twenty-four kids and we wanted to license it for seventeen kids, um, we would have that capability. We'd also have the flexible capability of ERC being able to, um, use JFS. The JFS portion of the building on the weekends when JFS is not there. So that allows more flexibility than, than we are right now. But if we I don't, there would be no place to build on this campus that I know of.
Yeah, it appears that you're a little mucked at that point. I have, I have another comment or question. Guys, you're, 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 you go ahead.
We talked about this early on. The intent was to whether we do a new build or whether we do some new construction in conjunction with the existing building. Intent was to ensure that there's the ability to, to expand the building, the physical building itself by, with some square footage. And it may expand into the parking that's included in that red dot square, that, that footprint. Uh, but they have all the parking to the east, which is underutilized currently. But that would be thirty years down the road. Mr. Haney's shaking his head, nodding affirmative to that. My comment. So there was, there was, we specifically talked about regardless of what we do there, we want the construct, the building as constructed. Because we looked at, we looked at the old, at the public safety building. We talked to an architect and they said, you can't bust out a wall and add to that because it wasn't constructed in a way to do that. We wanted to ensure that this building was constructed in a way that if we needed to add some square footage in the footprint that existed, we could do that in the future, twenty years down the road or whatever. Uh, but we would still utilize that parking to the east that is probably going to be. That's that.
And I have just a few more comments or questions here, but, um, I received, I went into my inbox yesterday, which apparently had a bunch of stuff I had not got to yet. But I got to it yesterday and I found in there a letter from Team Justice. And the second to your last slide talks about space needs and you've talked with the Community Task Force, Attention Utilization Committee, uh, Team Justice and Juvenile Court. I don't know, um, what that process was, if you presented, if you will, the different options to all of them. They had a robust discussion. They are truly understood the, uh, some of my concerns at least. I don't know if you, if there's, those most concerns were shared with anybody. I did contact some of the members on Team Justice and I found out that letter I received only had three supporters out of the seventeen members on that board. Um, the majority of that board had a very short, like a couple of minute briefing by, I believe yourself, and they did not vote on anything. They, they were simply informed that this was a discussion that was happening. Executive Committee, which is four members, three, one of which was missing. Three of those members did support this letter that was handed out to us yesterday. I, I received it yesterday. They, they sent it out about a week ago, week ago. But the letter is very well written. In fact, they, they said that the, when I asked specifically this letter, I think was written by county staff. It was recommended for their adoption. They did not write the letter. Right?
I, yes, I imagine.
They adopted the letter, but it was recommended by which to them.
Yes.
Um, so I'm wondering, you know, if these other organizations were given a full briefing, they do, do they truly understand?
But the complexity is always. Full briefing. What we reported to Team Justice, the was that it was approved through the budget process. But we, we weren't asking them for money. We weren't asking them for permission because they don't have purview over this. We were simply informing them of what was happening with that program, but they were not given the options because that's not what was approved. We were not in the decision making.
I understand they have no authority here, but what was the point of the letter then? To encourage us to move forward?
Because they were, they were in support of it.
Well, three members were, at least. We don't know about the rest of them because they, because I also don't know if they knew of any other options.
Right, you know, they were not presented in any other option. They were presenting what was passed by the, um, the OCC and the budget.
Okay, um, I'll just say this, and I, I'm going to get outvoted. I'm sure I will. Um, I do not like this plan.
Right.
Number one, I think it's too much money. Number two, I think we have a history in Central County of doing handling this issue with juvenile corrections, maybe not in the best way for these kids. And I think this is just another chapter of that. I think three sixty-seven is a disaster for the state of Kansas. They need to fix this bill. And right now I'll just say this, this is actually based, if I understand correctly, based on Chicago, Illinois. Uh, model, if you will, this is not a model I think that works very well here in Central County. Uh, we have seen reductions in, uh, in, in, in charges for crimes for youth and reductions in convictions, but that doesn't mean these crimes are not happening. What three, three, what three sixty, three sixty-seven did was it made us, we cannot charge these kids. We cannot adjudicate these kids. We cannot deal with these kids as criminals. We don't want them to have a criminal record as they, as move into their adult life. We want that, we want to help them not mess up, mess up their record, so to speak, because we've, we've been very gracious and patient with these kids almost to a fault. And I think it's a frustration for the district attorney. It's a frustration for our law enforcement. If you ask them directly about three sixty-seven, they'll tell you it's not working very well for Central County. This, my opinion, the juvenile field services is the Band-Aid of removing the YRC to criminogenic Ju- Juvenile Offender Residential Facilities. The JFS is a Band-Aid to that. And you mentioned it already, it's cheaper. It's less expensive. And that was a motivation by the state of Kansas to go in that direction because we, you know, we lacked data. And three sixty-seven, by the way, had a, had a post audit, legislated, legislated post audit this last year. Of which all it said is, you know what? We don't have, we still don't have data.
There's no data.
What, pardon me?
There's no data. I mean.
There's still no data. So they just, they went down a new path with a whole new idea. And guess what? They still don't have data. So we don't know what's working and what's not working because they've, they've not made data gathering. I'm data driven. I think most people in this room are data driven. We don't have data to know what's working and what's not working. I can tell you though, there's a lot of frustration by our law enforcement officers and our, and our prosecutors, our district attorneys is frustrated. We have a mess in our, in our state of Kansas. And what I see right now is we are embracing JFS to be right next door to JRF. And these kids who are JFS are transitioning to the private sector. And yet we're going to use the same staff, same programs and have them rubbing elbows with people who haven't even been adjudicated yet for their violent crimes. I think it's a mistake to put these kids, they're not the same kind of kids. Some kids are transitioning, transitioning back to private, private life. Some kids are going into the system and they haven't even been adjudicated yet. And we're going to have them rubbing elbows next to each other. And I can tell you right now, I've heard it before, if you want to you know, become a better criminal, spend some time in jail. Uh, I don't like the idea of having these kids who are transitioning back, back to the private sector. For, because it's good for our staff. It's good for parents convenience to go to two places next, next door to each other. We're going to put these kids who are transitioning back to private sector into a, a less positive environment at our facility. I also don't like the fact that we've actually allowed DCF to use our beds at all for sink kids. They have a problem. We should never allow a sink kid in our facilities, period, ever. I think we need to put, we need to, we need to talk about that as a commission here. We need to ask the state of Kansas to solve their sink kid problem. They have a problem. But to use our, our corrections beds for sink kids is a violation of this mingling children together. But again, it's almost like taking someone who's coming out of the jail and putting them with people who are going into the jail. That's what we're doing here. I find it troublesome. I don't want the idea of mingling these kids because they're, the JFS has a different purpose than JDF and JRF. They're not the same purpose. That was convenient for us, is not good for kids. I also don't like this, no, no offense to the neighborhood, but this is not a positive neighborhood. I don't like what, again, I don't, I think for, if you, if you were to do some repairs to JRF, and by the way, it needs to be done. I agree fixing JRF. I think there's some security issues there. Seven or, even say, let's round it up, maybe eight million dollars to fix some of the deals of that, some of the problems of that facility. That's still at fourteen million dollars on the table to go purchase a building for JFS someplace else. It's more positive. But separate these kids from the people going into the system, from the kids who are coming out of the system. And right now, a separate facility is much better to transition kids to the community. I don't like the idea of mingling this together. I'll say it again, over and over and over again. Three sixty-seven needs to be fixed. I, I, I am passionate about this. It's why I'm county commissioner today. This is a big problem for our state. And what I see right now is we're embracing this bad model by putting these two kids together. We, we, and by the way, the state of Kansas is saving a ton of money somewhere maybe near a hundred million dollars at this point that they've not let loose of because I, I really don't know why. They're still sitting on that money. It's going to get swept. But if we really want to create, if you will, a, a, a JFS facility that is the state's solution to remove in YRC two residential facilities, let's ask them for some money to create a facility for JFS. That, we haven't, we haven't crossed that path. The state, this is a state of Kansas problem too. They made that really clear when they closed down, when we and they shut down YRC twos. We, we were partnered to that, but JRBR has gone partly because we made a decision, but they pushed us in that direction. And then, and at the end of the day, they have some responsibility here and they're sitting on a hundred million dollars roughly. And yet they don't want to provide funding for a JFS facility for our kids. I find it troublesome. We would use county taxpayer money, twenty-two million dollars to create, to embrace a bad model. I put these kids who are coming out of the system, back with the kids going into the system. I think it's a mistake. I'll stop talking. Thank you.
Mr. and Mrs.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Steve and Andrew, thank you for the information you provided. Uh, just a couple of questions. JFS is kind of a problem right now because we're losing our lease and we're having to move out, right?
Yes.
And you need sixteen hundred, sixteen thousand one hundred and eighty square feet for that facility. How many square feet is this, Munger?
I think it's pretty close, but a lot of that is, um, common space area. So I think roughly about nine thousand is actual tenant space in Munger.
How many is, uh, Ark Valley?
No, I don't have Ark Valley memorized. Quite as, I don't, I'll have to get back to the other one.
Well, Steve and I talked about this, uh, last week. So he knows my issues. Uh, right now, uh, frankly, out of nine hundred and some pages of the budget last, uh, August, when we passed it, I missed that this was in the twenty-five CIP. And I like it in the twenty-five CIP. This is not my priority right now. An admin building is my priority because an admin building is going to serve hundreds of our staff. It's going to serve five hundred and twenty-five thousand citizens, uh, where this building, uh, I got your numbers, uh, it's, it's in the hundreds, uh, a year. Total. And they're not all at once. If this was in twenty-six or twenty-seven, uh, I might be more interested in it at this point. Uh, but being in twenty-five, uh, my priority is to get an admin building and start funding that admin building right away. If there's someplace else we can put JFS in the meantime, because I know that's an issue. And we've got two empty buildings that I know of. I don't know if we've got any other empty spaces around the, the county right now. But at, at this point in time, I, I can't vote on this. Because it's in the wrong year. So I, I'm kind of in a quandary right now and I don't know what's being passed out, but, uh, that, that's my issue is we're serving just a very few people and we're spending twenty-two million dollars on this. Where that, uh, we need to spend, that's two thirds of what it's going to cost for an admin building. Where that we're going to take care of, uh, serving to five hundred and twenty-five thousand people plus have room for all of our staff and it'll eliminate a million dollars a year in rent that we're paying for this facility. So that's where my priorities lie at this point in time, uh, when it comes up, uh, in the budget, uh, I'll be voting, splitting out the CIP this year unless it gets moved to another one and I'll be voting to get the CIP. Thank you.
I give you some information on that.
Please.
Pretty please. So what I did pass out is a slide from our CIP presentation a few weeks ago. And because there was so much in that, we didn't spend a lot of time on this slide. But to your point, Commissioner Dennis, I think it's really important to note that we actually have both the admin building and this complex already in the forecast. And so if you look at twenty twenty-four, we are anticipating actually issuing that, remember in twenty twenty-three, there was a CIP amendment to approve an admin building. And that was because of the time we were going to look at a purchase agreement for our facility. So because of that, the admin building was moved into officially, the CIP is an amendment. So it wasn't through a budget process, but it's in the CIP. We have it in our quarterly reports. We've got all in there. And so we actually have already talked with, um, recognizing the, the timeline that we've heard. Um, we would want to bring a proposal to you in July. I know there's a couple of different options still being discussed, but in July of this year to get some direction to move forward, um, we would anticipate having a bond sale in September, receiving proceeds in October, closing on it, um, so that we would get half of the cost of an admin building upfront because between the multitude of projects listed here, um, that we historically, we bond fund at the end of a project. We simply don't have enough cash, even with the very robust financial situation that Hope presented on in the, the fund balance. We don't have enough cash to float all of this. So we would want to do a bond issue to get half of the cost of an admin building this year. Um, we would also issue bonds for the rest of the courthouse complex this year and begin paying the debt service on that. In twenty twenty-five is when we would anticipate selling bonds on the community based building and the other projects that are listed there. This is just the forecast for now. That's why we've talked about, we need to have votes to, to change our trajectory if we need to. Um, but this is actually, when you looked at that bond and interest forecast that was presented, this is what's in there. Um, and that admin building has been in there since last year, since the commission.
When's the adding another twenty-two million dollars in debt? We're going to have to bond that.
Yes.
We're not going.
Yes, all of this is, is bond funding that we would anticipate.
So once we bond that, we got to start paying it back.
Right.
And we got to pay interest on it.
Yep.
And right now we're facing a deficit for the next few years.
Yes.
So if we kick this down, what's that going to do to our deficit?
Uh, it would improve, it would start to improve it in twenty twenty-six. Because we would anticipate selling this in twenty-five, we would make our first payment in twenty twenty-six. So it would start to improve it then, but it's really the, the problem is before that. And we also I don't want to get too far into the weeds on this because I know that's not the point of this conversation, but we do need to have a relatively stable, um, bond of interest mill levy. This is currently in the forecast. And if we take it out, that becomes a significant portion. Um, that does help the deficit, but it does mean that going forward, anytime the commission wanted to do, uh, any significant um, bond, we would need to raise the mill levy most likely, or find other areas of the organization to cut into. So that's why there is some comfort for me in this too, with having this project, because we know the NCAP falls off in two thousand twenty-eight. We have the spirit debt that falls out or falls off in twenty twenty-eight. And, and we will need to find some, we know that there's a plethora of projects. We talked about there's fourteen million dollars worth of projects just sitting on the watch list today. Um, but that's always in the back of my mind is how do we make sure that we're not either artificially cutting the mill levy rate, not anticipating future needs or, um, otherwise absorbing it into the operating budget. So that's why we thought this was a prudent.
I still don't see this as the priority.
Understood.
I see an admin building and some of these other ones that we have to fix, uh, and those, those we, we have to maintain buildings. We have two empty buildings sitting here right now and there may be more space, uh, sitting out here. And we're not serving very many kids. And it's costing us a heck of a lot of money. You know where I'm coming from. I, I cannot support I, I cannot support putting this in the 2025 CIP.
Okay, uh, la- last question and a comment and we'll finish this thing up. What is the lease cost that we were using over at Harry Street? How much were you leasing that for?
Uh, currently, we are paying for, uh, JFS annually about a hundred and eleven, almost a hundred and twelve thousand annually.
Annually for JFS over at Harry and we're losing that lease.
Correct.
Okay. Well, just a couple of thoughts. I, I'm going to continue to support this loudly. I, I appreciate Commissioner Dennis's approach and on priorities. I, I certainly agree that the admin building is a priority that we have to cross that bridge, certainly. I, I appreciate Commissioner Howe's approach on many of these things. And we have adamant agreement on Senate Bill 367 and the devastating impact that it's had in this community. I just, I'm not in full agreement on the mixing of kids like Suzu, just not. These kids, 80% of kids in USC 259 come from under the poverty level. They've been in, they are involved in trauma because they come from traumatic situations many times. And just because they're at JFS or JRF or, or in reporting center, they're still going back to traumatic situations. This is a, a larger ecosystem of problems that we're dealing with. My priority, although the top of the list may not be the admin building, the top of my list is doing something in juvenile services. It's the very top of my list. I, it's not much I wouldn't spend to make sure that we can get better outcomes for vulnerable kids and families. If you can tell me, Steve, that there are programs and opportunities in doing this that will be incremental gains to this community. If you can tell me that you believe, in your expert opinion, that there will be better outcomes for vulnerable kids to change the trajectory that we're having in this community. If you believe that, do you, you believe that?
I do believe that. I, I do believe by embracing grassroots organizations helps keep, helps us do something that we're not doing right now. There's a difference. I do believe that. That gives us more opportunity.
I, I, I know we, we're talking about a big number here, but this is, this is a, this is a number, in my opinion, that's a worthy investment into vulnerable kids in this community. And, and so I will, I'll vote in the affirmative when it comes. And I appreciate everybody's opinions and appreciate everybody's convictions, but this is my top priority. Um, and, um, and it's important to me that we change the outcomes. I think we're, I think we're in a crisis in this community with children. Um, I see it every day. So I, this will be, I'll continue to advocate for this, but I appreciate those that will not agree with me. Um, I think that's okay. Um, but I'll be an affirmative vote for this and I appreciate the work. I'm excited to talk about the programs that we're actually going to institute in here uh, to really help take this to another level. So appreciate it. Tom, anything else? Okay, we're a little over, but that's okay. Appreciate the time. Thanks.